Good morning and welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Greeley-Evan School District 6. Today is the 25th day of March 2024. This meeting will now come to order. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lemon, will you call the role force, please?
Director Azari?
Present.
Director Bentley?
Present.
Director Campos Spitsi?
Present.
Director Mash?
Present.
Director Matthews?
Present.
Director Norwood? Director Sullivan?
Present.
Six board members present.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Well, again, welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Greeley-Evan School District 6. We appreciate that you're here tonight. I see a lot of people here tonight. I imagine some of you are here to receive some awards, and so we're glad to be able to have you here tonight. Just want to give you a quick announcement. Probably you've noticed our screens are going off and on. We're experiencing some technical difficulties, so you may see those go black. Our screens may also go black, so it may cause some delays for us, but nothing that we're too concerned about. Also want to let you know, well, first, welcome to my left. We always have our students with us, and this is Ms. Natalie Luiza Valenzuela and Regan Dellis sitting with us tonight. And then you also notice that we're missing a couple of people. And our superintendent, Dr. Pilch, she is sick. She's recovering from a respiratory infection and won't be with us tonight. And then Mr. Norwood, he is under the weather as well, and so he won't be with us tonight either. But we do have a meeting to get to and a few announcements for you. One, we had the Success Foundation breakfast this morning. Many of you know what the Success Foundation is. It is our nonprofit for District 6, and they do a fantastic job of raising money for things that sometimes we don't have money in our budget to accomplish. And one of the things that was focused on today was the John W. Hayfley and Delia Hayfley Opportunity Fund, and that fund provides opportunities for students who don't get to do some of the things that other students get to do. And so like one of the things that's mentioned that people don't often think about is that when we do extracurricular activities after school, when we play a sport after school, when we have a play performance that requires practices after school, we don't always have... Not all of our students have transportation to those practices and to those rehearsals. And so one of the things that they mentioned was just wanting to provide rides for students who generally take the bus to school and after school, but so that they have the opportunity to be part of some of those extracurricular activities that mean so much to students in our district. And so we just can't say how thankful we are for the Success Foundation and all that they do for this district. And so I just wanted to bring something to everyone's attention, and that is they announced that there is a matching... This breakfast was to raise money for the Success Foundation, and I don't know that it's still true that this is still applicable, but there was a $1,000, $100,000 matching for this breakfast this morning. Now, I don't know when they check the website to see when all those donations came in, but if you were thinking about giving to the Success Foundation this year, today would be a great day to do that because it might be matched. Anyway, we're thankful for them and thankful for all that they do. Just also wanted to let everyone know that we just finished looking at our budget, and this is preliminary. We won't pass a budget until June. But we were beginning to look at that and to look at everything that we might do and might not do. And there's some things that we've been doing that we might not do, and that's because our ESER funding, and if you don't know what ESER funding is, ESER funding are the federal COVID funds that were given to school districts, and we've been spending those for the last four years to provide additional classroom support, additional better student-to-teacher ratios for our district, and those funds are going away this year. And so it just made me really thankful as we're looking at all the things that maybe we are going to have to cut. It's roughly a little under $20 million that we had last year that we won't have this year. But it made me thankful for the passage of the MLO and that funding that we do have and that funding that our community provides for us to do those additional things for students. And so and just so thankful for this community in any number of ways, and we just want to say that every time we get the chance. And so that's all I have tonight, and we're now to our superintendent's honor roll, but I'm not thinking... Oh, sorry. I am thinking that Ms. Reese Myers is going to come and do the superintendent's honor roll for Dr. Pilch tonight. Welcome, Ms. Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews and members of the board. I am a poor substitute for Dr. Pilch, so I apologize to our honorees tonight. I did spend some time with her yesterday, and she was very disappointed not to be here tonight to honor you. So I know her loss will be felt tonight, but we are still happy to honor those who are on the superintendent's honor roll tonight. And first, I'd like to bring up the Greeley West High School Robotics Team. I see you guys back there. Come on up. And there is Mr. Van Gilder here? Oh, sorry, sir. Come on up. So the Greeley West Robotics Team is being honored tonight for their representation of District 6 at an international robotics competition that was held in Calgary, Canada this year. The team is made up of seniors Brennan Truitt, raise your hands, Brennan, Logan Reynolds, Caleb Lamb, and Junior Holden Kleinman, and their sponsor is Greeley West Science Teacher Tristan Van Gilder. And so around 160 teams competed in Calgary, and the Greeley West team was awarded the sportsmanship award, which I'm very proud of them for. That was for their cooperation at the event, their helping other teams, their just congeniality at the event, so I thought that was really cool. They gave a high-level interview where they demonstrated good teamwork to the judges, and I'd like to turn it over, I guess, to Mr. Van Gilder, who's going to talk about what they're showing us tonight. And if you could step to the podium.
Hello, everybody. So what you see in front of you is the product of their hard work throughout the year. I am not allowed to do anything with the robot, so they are just showing you some of the things that their robot can do, which is drive around. This year's game, they were asked to move these tri balls around the field and be able to score goals throughout the year. And so as their robot design has developed throughout the year, this is kind of where it's at. And then at the very end of the game, to earn extra points, the robot is able to elevate on these elevation bars, as you can almost see from these two students here, where they are able to come out to the bar and use a rack and pinion lift to be able to elevate the robot off of the ground by itself. And so they are amazing students, and I'm just super, super proud of their accomplishments this year. And I couldn't ask for a better students to have taken to an international competition.
Thank you, Mr. Van Gilder. Here is a certificate that we'd like to present for your team. Thank you. I got to interview the team a little while ago, and they told me some great stories about actually getting to travel outside of the country, and that was such a huge part of this experience for this team, to experience a different culture and different foods and to meet people from all over the world. So we're very grateful that they got that experience. Our second honoree tonight is Carly Engel. Carly? Ms. Engel is being honored tonight for being named as the Colorado Association Teachers of Family and Consumer Sciences Outstanding New Professional of the Year. Ms. Engel brings a dynamic blend of industry expertise and academics to her role as a family and consumer science teacher at Northridge High School. With a bachelor's degree in hotel and restaurant management and a master's degree in business administration, she seamlessly integrates real-world experiences into her classroom, providing students with a unique perspective. Ms. Engel has served at Northridge as a teacher since 2021 and has been an asset to the students and the team. Thank you, Ms. Engel, for your continued dedication to the students and the field of family and consumer sciences. Congratulations on your well-deserved recognition. Thank you for being here tonight. Our third honoree tonight is Jamie Valdez, who is also a family and consumer science teacher at Greeley Central High School. And Ms. Valdez is being honored tonight for being named as the Colorado Association Teachers of Family and Consumer Sciences Teacher of the Year. And during the group's conference, Ms. Valdez's introduction stated that one of Mrs. Valdez's strongest qualities is her ability to encourage students backgrounds, cultures, and preferences through the work completed in class. Student choice and voice is evident in nearly every piece of her teaching. Should a student present a new idea, she embraces it, researches it, and makes it part of her content. Ms. Valdez has worked with district-level partners to get serve-safe funding for students to complete the food handler test and pass their capstone requirements, along with building relationships to get internships and work-based learning opportunities for her students. Ms. Valdez has served at Central since 2019, and thank you, Ms. Valdez, for your continued dedication to student growth and for your advocacy of family and consumer sciences, and congratulations on your very well-deserved award. And finally, but certainly, like, very importantly, we would like to recognize Megan Nugent, who is the choir teacher at McCalla STEM Academy. I've known Megan for a long time, and she works very hard for her students. You may recognize her from this morning. She helped lead the Silver Falcons Choir at the Success Foundation in the National Anthem. We are honoring her tonight for being dedicated to students throughout District 6. With the support of music teachers throughout the district, Ms. Nugent organized the district-wide Greeley Evans Elementary Choral Festival that took place at the UCCC on February 27th. And I know some of you were at that event. That is a huge event to orchestrate. That stage is filled with students at the end, and it's a lot of coordination, and Megan did a wonderful job with that. She has already been invited to be recognized tonight when we received another honor roll nomination for her choir festival, and I'd like to read you a part of that nomination now. Megan's commitment to our community reaches far beyond her classroom walls. As a director of Greeley Children's Chorale, both of my sons have had the opportunity to learn from her musical expertise. More importantly, the past two years, she has coordinated the DECC Festival, which is a massive undertaking. As I sat in the audience, I not only thoroughly enjoyed listening to the young voices and watching their enthusiasm, but I watched the audience members, parents and grandparents who were smiling ear to ear, so proud watching their children. I cannot even fathom the extra hours it took for Ms. Nugent to make this event possible for our District 6 scholars, but I do know that it was magical to see so many singers come together in one space and share their love of music. This is why I am recommending Ms. Megan for the honor roll. This nomination was submitted by Sarah Morales, who's a teacher at Maplewood Elementary School. Thank you, Ms. Morales, for recognizing Ms. Nugent's efforts and for nominating her for the superintendent's honor roll. I just have to do another little shout-out to Megan. When we were having our staff-wide convocation, we called on Megan to organize teachers this time to sing the National Anthem at that event, and she did not hesitate. She came forward and did that, and it was amazing as well. So thank you, and join me in honoring Ms. Nugent for her amazing work in District 6.
Hi. First of all, I just want to say how incredibly humbled and honored I am to be recognized here tonight, but I also wanted to say that the month of March is recognized nationally as Music in Our Schools Month. And so on behalf of myself, my husband, Tom Nugent, who's also a music teacher here in District 6, and all of our other fabulous music teachers, we just want to say thank you to the board, to district leadership, and to our entire community as a whole for the dedication and support to music education here in Greeley. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, Ms. Myers, and congratulations again to our Greeley West Robotics Team, Ms. Engel, Ms. Valdez, and Ms. Nugent. Next on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. So if somebody would make a motion, we'll proceed.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District 6 approves the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Sing none? Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Azari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsi?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Ms. Lemon, next on our agenda is our Council of Student Representatives report, and so I'm not sure exactly who is coming to make this report tonight. Frontier Academy is...
I don't know how you knew that. We stood up and you said Frontier, like we had name tags on. So good evening, members of the board, President Matthews, and members of the Greeley community. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. I'm so proud to introduce Frontier Academy's members of the Council of Student Representatives. Four amazing students who embody our mission at Frontier of building leaders. They will give you a glimpse into the goings-on at Frontier, what we're most proud of, and some of our goals for the future.
My name is Kaylee Baumgartner. I am a junior at Frontier Academy. I am involved in the Council of Student Representatives, the Student Health Advisory Committee. I am the president of Frontier's Women in STEM Club, the Secretary of Key Club, a member of the Frontier Academy Jazz Band, National Honor Society, Academic... of the Frontier Academy Jazz Band, National Honor Society, academic decathlon, and I run tech for our theater program.
My name is Elaine Henrickson. I'm a junior at Frontier Academy, and I'm involved in the Council of Student Representatives, the District Six Student Health Advisory Council, National Honor Society, the Theater Appreciation Club, the Theater Program, and Greeley West Women Dive. I am also webmaster for Key Club and vice president of Women in STEM Club.
My name is Josh Leclaire, and I'm a sophomore at Frontier Academy. I'm involved in the Council of Student Representatives, as well as Frontier's Interact Club and Jazz Band.
My name is Kayden Clark, and I'm a sophomore at Frontier Academy. I'm involved in the Council of Student Representatives. I'm a member of our jazz band, as well as our Interact Club. I participate in both basketball and track, in addition to various service opportunities in my school and community.
At last year's board meeting presentation, we brought up that we wanted to find a way to increase school spirit, as well as attendance at Frontier home games. We were excited to report that we are seeing a large increase in school spirit and participation. One of the ways that we have seen the most school spirit is through our school's participation in the Colorado Make-A-Wish organization. Our school sponsored a Wish Week, in which we had several games and fun ways for our students to rally together to do something truly special. Additionally, we have added a new concession stand and restrooms to our track and soccer fields. Parents and students are more excited to go to home games, knowing that they will be able to use the restroom and have a bite to eat. We also have noticed significant increases in the amount of clubs and school activities available to students. Lunchtimes are always filled with several options and opportunities to participate and get involved.
I feel like it is amazing that we've had such important goals that have made a huge impact on our school spirit. But we've had a few ways that we could grow. One of the most impactful things that we could do to improve our school is getting new equipment for our outside lunch area. As of right now, we have a field for students to socialize in and play some interactive games, for example, football, and a single basketball hoop, which makes it hard for more than one group of people to play without the game becoming too overpopulated. New equipment would open up more ways for students to socialize and have fun while on their lunch break. Another way we could improve the Frontier experience is updating our parking lot area, because it would help keep students and parents that are coming and leaving a lot safer. One of the problems with our current parking lot is that the spaces are a little bit close together. With so many young drivers, a little extra space in the parking spots would make it easier to park without the risk of swiping a car when driving into the space.
In addition to the parking lot update, one thing our school would love to move towards is taking steps to improve the safety of drop-off and pickup. The road our school is on has a stoplight at one end, but only a two-way stop on the other end. This is an area where I have seen many almost accidents, and it causes a lot of traffic after school as it can be difficult to turn. We would love to eventually ask the city of Greeley to put in a four-way stop or light at that intersection to help improve the safety of all our students.
Regarding the issue of traffic near the exit of our building on West 16th Street and 65th Avenue, we would love to hear your thoughts and advice on how to work with the city of Greeley to improve the school zone and ensure the safety of our students. Thank you for your time and consideration regarding our school. You are much appreciated.
Do you have any questions for us? We'd have you to take.
I think we have a few, maybe. Mr. Bentley?
Not so much a question, but a comment. I remember you guys here last year talking about the school spirit and trying to get more people involved. But I just want to say, I went to a middle school track meet on Thursday, and I couldn't even sit down, right? So I think you guys are doing a great job, and the parking is a huge issue. So glad you guys are thinking about that and working on it. So, good job. Thanks for being involved.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Not seeing any, so I'll just say thank you for being here tonight. We so appreciate Frontier and everything they provide for District Six, and kudos for all that you've accomplished.
Thank you very much.
Next on our agenda is our Classified Council Employee of the Year. And I'd like to invite Assistant Superintendent Annette Overton to the podium to make this presentation.
Good evening. I want to ask Sasha to come up. Great. Tonight, I would like to talk for a minute about our dedicated support staff who support tirelessly, who work tirelessly behind the scenes to ensure smooth operations of our district. From the bus drivers who prep for transporting students to school, to the nutrition services department employees preparing meals to get students ready for learning, from friendly faces who greet us at the front desk, to those who maintain our facilities and manage our buildings. Bringing our employees into the system, we honor the human resources, the finance, and the payroll support staff as well. Of course, we have many support employees who work with students, families, and instructional work at the schools and across the district. Let's take a moment just now to express our gratitude for their unwavering commitment, for their they are the heart and soul of District Six, and without them, our path would be far less bright. We highlight your dedication, your hard work, and your invaluable contributions. And it's this time of year that our Classified Council honors one of their team members in the Classified Employee of the Year Award. And Sasha is here tonight to share this year's process and their candidates.
Hi. Thank you for having us tonight. My name is Sasha Cahoon. I'm the office manager at Greeley West High School and the Classified Council President.
My name is Jessica Piasenza, and I am the vice president for Classified Council and Greeley West Athletic Secretary.
Tonight, we are honored to have this opportunity to present this award and recognize the top five nominees. We had about 130 nominations this year. The top five nominees are Abby Massey from Franklin Middle School, Amy Walmeyer from Northridge, Manny Zamora from Jefferson, Maria Ramirez from D6 Online Academy, and Martine Silvera from Facilities. Thank you all for your hard work and dedication to the building, to your buildings, and to the district. This certain recipient had over 15 nominations, and all nominations had amazing things to say about them. And I'd like to share a couple of those tonight. This person exemplifies the vision and mission of the district to the highest standard. They are always willing to jump in to support staff and students. They volunteer for extra duties such as board meetings, dances, and Friday school. He is an outstanding individual, takes his job seriously, works diligently to keep the halls safe while building relationships with students and staff. He always has a smile on his face and provides encouraging words to everyone that passes while patrolling. In his role as a security guard, he has gone above and beyond to foster positive relationships with students, staff, and visitors alike. His approach is grounded in respect and empathy, creating and welcoming secure environments while everyone feels valued and supported. He maintains a vigilant presence throughout the campus, proactively identifying and addressing potential risks before they escalate. Quick thinking and decisive action have helped prevent incidences and ensures the protection of our school community. Manny is known to most of us and serves Greeley Evans School District Six as a campus monitor at Jefferson High School. Congratulations to the 2024 Outstanding Classified Employee of the Year, Manny Zamora.
Well, it's an honor. I'm very pleased to get this award. I'm a little nervous. I love working for District Six, have for 12 years. My biggest thing is working with the kids I work with at Jefferson High School. Being able to play a part to push them through when they feel like they don't have a chance is huge. So to see them walk across the stage, that's my paycheck. That's my award. I appreciate you guys. I love you all. Coach Jefferson,
Next on our agenda is our School Social Work Month Proclamation. And this is an action item that will need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education at Greeley Evans School District Six approves the proclamation recognizing March 2024 as School Social Work Month as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Before we go any further, Ms. Mash, would you be so kind as to read that proclamation?
I would be happy to. Honorary proclamation of the Board of Education of Weld County School District Six. Proclamation recognizing March 2024 as School Social Work Month. Whereas the significance of social school social work, as highlighted in the Elementary and Secondary Education Act of 1965 and the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, underscores its integral role in education settings. And whereas school social workers play a central role in cultivating positive school environment, and whereas school social workers' unwavering commitment involves guiding students to explore their unique abilities, strengths, interests, and talents, employing evidence-based strategies while championing educational equity. And whereas as licensed mental health professionals within educational settings, school social workers administer crucial assessments, interventions, counseling, family outreach, and community referrals. And whereas school social workers' scope extends to a myriad of student issues, including but not limited to mental health concerns, family dynamics, trauma, homelessness, and substance abuse. And whereas National School Social Work Month serves as a platform to acknowledge and celebrate the unwavering dedication, professionalism, and compassion of school social workers in meeting the diverse needs of students and families. Now therefore, the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six proclaims March 2024 as National School Social Work Month, recognizing and honoring the invaluable contributions and accomplishments of school social workers in fostering the well-being and academic success of students in Greeley Evans School District Six. Given under the hand and the executive seal of Weld County School District Six this 25th day of March 2024, Michael Matthews, President.
Thank you, Ms. Mash. Are there any comments or questions from board members regarding Ms. Mash?
I will just say, I always love when we get the opportunity to highlight the work of one of our specific roles here in District Six. And especially over the last four years, we've seen such an increase in the needs of our students and families. And so greatly appreciate all of the work that our social workers do throughout the district. So we are very pleased to honor you tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Mash. Dr. Campos Spitsy?
I just wanted to say, at the work session just before this meeting, we, as President Michael Matthews mentioned, had to talk about budget cuts, right? Because our COVID, $20 million COVID dollars are gone or going away. And I was so happy to see how thoughtfully our finance team, in partnership with our leadership team, had thought about what positions really we had added with that money that we couldn't, we didn't want to lose. And I was really happy to see that social workers were on there as a position that we find so valuable, and that even with the budget cuts, we, as a district, are trying our best to keep those positions filled. So.
Thank you, Dr. Campos Spitsy. Want to invite, and I'm sorry that I'm not going to get your last names pronounced correctly, but Jessie Cagliano, Shelby Grossball, and Jessica Hernandez. Up in, would somebody like to, would you guys like to say anything on behalf of our social workers?
Thank you so much for having us tonight. My name is Jessie Cagliano, and I'm here with Shelby and Jessica, our social elementary school social workers. And I am the lead school social worker for District Six. I would like to thank Dr. Pilch, President Matthews, and members of the board, as well as our district leadership, for your support of the District Six school social workers. District Six hired our first school social worker in 2013, and due to the invaluable contributions of our early social workers and the unwavering support of our administrators and school board, we have grown to a team of 19 dedicated professionals extending our reach to elementary, K-8, middle, and high schools. School social workers' approach to overall wellness is rooted in understanding the individuals, families, and the community. Our school social workers have helped students through some of the most challenging moments in their lives. School social workers are the ones who help families find housing and resources after their lives have been turned upside down. They are the people who listen with empathy and compassion after loss and death. School social workers are the people who will make sure our students are fed and have clothes that make them feel like their best selves. School social workers sit with our students in all of life's changes and find the strengths in each and every student. Our school social workers are dedicated to fostering positive school environments where every student feels safe, supported, and empowered to thrive academically, emotionally, and socially. We are so grateful for the teachers, administrators, school counselors, school psychologists, parents, and community partners that we collaborate with to support our students. I'm honored to accept the proclamation of the School Social Work Month on behalf of all the District Six school social workers.
Well, thank you. And again, I will add my thank yous to that for all the work that you do in our district. We know that mental health is such a, such a big struggle for our students and for our employees right now. And we just, we appreciate you guys and everything that you do. I think we have a few more people that want to offer some thank yous. Mr. Bentley?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to say thanks to you guys. Nineteen of you is, seems like a pretty good-sized team, but we have 36 buildings, you know, so it's, it stretches you guys then in 23,000 students and 2,500-ish employees, right? So you guys have your work cut out for you. And I just want to recognize that the diversity of our district, there's one thing in common that everybody has in its feelings. And as a little kid and going through what I've gone through in the last three or four years, I realized how important those are, even in little boys, to kind of be able to express that with someone who's not their parent sometimes. There are some, some of those things where they're more comfortable with you guys, and I've come to learn and appreciate that. So I just wanted to express my thanks and to wish you guys well. And let us know if you need anything.
Mr. Azari?
Sorry, I'd like to chime in. As well as a former staff member, I know how significant the work is that you do out there. And it's often not seen. It's the silent folks behind the scenes that are the glue that keep the system together. And you cannot be thanked enough for all the, all that you do. I think if somebody were to follow you just for one day, to see what you deal with on a day-to-day basis, we would just marvel at the jobs you do. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Azari. And I don't see any other questions or comments from board members. And so, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Azari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsy?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
Next on our agenda is our Greeley Creative District Coloring Book presentation. And we have Michelle Buren and Louisa Anderson here to make this presentation. So I'd invite you guys to the podium.
Good evening, District Six board members and members of the community. My name is Louisa Anderson, and I'm the chair of the Art Commission. One of the things that the Art Commission is in charge of is the outreach to the city of Greeley for our art, which you've seen everywhere, especially in our downtown trees and throughout our parks, and on our traffic boxes. So here is Michelle Buren. She is a teacher at Maplewood Elementary. She's going to give a short presentation about the coloring books that are going to third graders this year.
It's my privilege to present to you the eighth edition of the Art Commission's Coloring Book. Every March since 2014, the Art Commission has prepared these coloring books for Greeley's young residents and District Six third-grade students. One of our goals for students and their families and teachers and others who see the books is to recognize and appreciate and help protect Greeley's vast public art collection, and to understand that each piece of art in the collection actually belongs to Greeley citizens regardless of their age. These beautiful sculptures, murals, utility box covers, as well as our indoor pieces, are yours to enjoy, and we encourage you to venture out and explore our amazing public art collection. The eighth edition of the Coloring Book was updated last year with some new and significant changes. One of the changes was adding new artwork to the book, including the cover, which you might recognize if you've been to the Family Fun Plex in the last year. The utility box cover on page nine, which was designed by Emma Ortega, who was a Franklin Middle School student at the time when she created the artwork, which for me as an art teacher is always a really inspiring story to share with my students. Another update is that the committee that focuses on the coloring books, we came together and carefully looked through art curriculum and vocabulary to choose third-grade level vocab and questions to include, so that the books can reinforce lessons that they're already learning in their art classes. And personally, I love using these as a tool. We're about to start some public art and community lessons, and we'll be using these as our inspiration. And then one of the most exciting updates to this edition is that all of the text included in this book this year is in English and Spanish, making this more accessible to our Spanish-speaking students and families. We're very proud of the progress this project has made over the last 10 years. So thank you for letting us share it with you this evening and with our students throughout the district. We'd also like to thank you for your support and collaboration over the past 10 years and your ongoing commitment to empower- and your ongoing commitment to empower our students with a well-rounded and excellent education, which absolutely includes the arts.
And we invite each of you on the board to take one of these coloring books home with you so you can experience it like all your third graders. Thank you.
And thank you both for being here tonight. We always appreciate these coloring books and the work that our students do and the celebration of arts that happens every March. And so, thank you. Next on our agenda tonight is our superintendent's report. And as we said, our superintendent is missing tonight, so we won't have a superintendent's report. So we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is an Innovation 2030 update, Safety and Security. I see Chief of Security, Mayor John Gates, coming to the podium. So, welcome.
Be here just a short time because I'm going to turn this presentation over to Director of Safety and Security Wade Corvus.
All yours, Wade. All right, you able to see that presentation on your? Okay. All right. Thank you, Chief Gates, President Matthews, members of the board, and Council of Student Representatives. This presentation that I'm going to provide to you is just kind of an overview of our safety and security team here at District Six, what we've currently been working on, some things to look forward to, to the future. And that's what I'm just going to give you an overview on here. If you look on the bottom left there, that's what our current safety and security team is with Chief John Gates, myself, and Assistant Director Brad Lukey, who's there in the back corner of the room. Across the top of this front page, that is our Greeley School Resource Unit. This is actually a picture from last year at Greeley West High School during the National SRO Day. And we've been, there's a couple of new faces on that now. We have Officer Diaz, that she's not pictured here, but it's now at Greeley West, and Officer Cowart, who's at Greeley Central and Jefferson. On this first page, I want to show you, we lost it again. So what we're moving towards here is definitely, I kind of have a picture there of a dispatch center. I do know that a lot of you saw the press release in regards to the grant that was written to get a command center going. That will be something that will be coming soon and that we will be looking to get this going in May is when the project's going to be getting going. Where does safety and security come into District Six and Innovation 2030? It falls under our climate and culture. District Six cultivates a safe, healthy, and inclusive learning environment for all, embracing our diversity and engaging all stakeholders. What I have in the presentation is an image of Maslow's hierarchy of needs and how safety and security contributes to getting our students all the way to self-fulfillment and accomplishment. And safety and security kind of falls into the same ranks of psychological needs in regards to food, shelter, and clothing. The one above that is safety and security and creating, making them feel safe and be safe at school. Because if they don't feel safe at school, we're not going to be able to get them to the upper level, to social friendships, group mentorship, esteem, recognition, and self-confidence, and ultimately to self-fulfillment in graduation. Some resources that I do, that I get all my information from would definitely be Colorado Safe Schools Act and the packet that they've put together, averting targeted school violence from the Secret Services Report, and the National Preparedness Goal from FEMA. Also, another additional resource that I continually go to would be the Colorado Office of School Safety, which often continually sends out training opportunities. While it's still up here presented, one of my favorite quotes from FEMA, and this comes from the National Preparedness Goal, is preparedness is a shared responsibility. It calls for the involvement of everyone, not just the government, in preparedness efforts. By working together, everyone can help keep our nation safe from harm and keep it resilient when struck by hazards such as natural disasters, acts of terrorism, and pandemics. That's directly from the FEMA guide, and I've used this to kind of tie into the things that I want to do for District Six. And the biggest message that I want to convey is it's safety and security for District Six takes everyone. It takes everyone in this room, from our students and parents, to our faculty, our school administrators, to everyone in this room, is a part of my safety and security team. And that's how we're going to continue to keep our schools and our communities safe. Not going to read everything in regards from the National Preparedness Mission, but the U.S. Secret Service has long held that the prevention is the best form of protection. This goes from protecting the president to everything that we try to protect in our country, is continuing to be vigilant and be in prevention efforts and making sure that we're putting our school structures and getting everything in place so that we're prepared. Because the more that you prepare, you're going to be ready to handle any circumstances that may come your way. These are listed on our website for anybody to access. If you want to ever see the information, it's under Crisis Management on our Safety and Security link on our webpage for the district. But it ties into prevention, mitigation, protection, response, and recovery. I've tied that into this diagram that I created above. I created this when I came to the district last fall in 2022. This diagram gives you a good illustration and some clarity as to what are the safety and security things that we're putting into place. I use the information from the National Preparedness Goal of prevention, mitigation, protection, response, and recovery to tie into everything that we're trying to do here at District Six. I labeled it the five pillars of safety and security for District Six. It starts with information technology, everything that we're putting into place there from monitoring Crow Book activity to Go Guardian Beacon alerts on end to all this, everything that they do from a cybersecurity perspective, from IT. Secondly, would definitely be something that we used a lot of the MLL dollars for would be towards environmental security and control systems, everything in regards to cameras, to our access control systems, secure perimeters around our schools, just increasing those entry vestibules, everything that we can do to make our schools a hard target. Thirdly, I have listed would be threat management and our daily practices at our schools. This goes, this ties directly into our climate and culture of our schools. I'm going to tie, I'm going to break down each one of these a little bit further here in a minute. This is just to kind of give you an overview of them. Also, into daily practices would be threat management and threat assessments when necessary and Title IX investigations. The third, fourth column is emergency management and crisis management. If, when you're in our schools, you've probably seen everything from the standard response protocol when it comes to a hold, secure perimeter, lockdown, evacuation, and shelter. Those are the same procedures that we're doing at each of our schools. And it's continuing to train our staff and making sure that they know everything that they need to do in case of an emergency. And then on the last column I have is our law enforcement and first responders. As they are a part of our daily practices and they are integrated into the culture and climate in our schools. But then at the same time, in the incident of a major emergency, they're kind of our last go-to that we call in for additional resources and assistance from law enforcement. So across that top bar there, I kind of have the kind of the green, yellow, red, which kind of indicates that we're kind of operating in the green and the green and yellow on a daily basis. But at the same time, we need to be prepared to get our emergency management practices and have that continual contact with our law enforcement and first responders. I do want to tie this into everybody in the room who I lean on a lot. I got Mr. Henson sitting here to my left. He is a great resource for me from the information technology and from our environmental, everything that we're doing with our new buildings that ties into safety and security. I want to recognize Kent Henson, the IT Director, Tony Chek, all of our system engineers and IT techs that continually help to maintain and keep all of our safety and security software. We have a lot of software and a lot of systems out there that we lean on these guys to kind of continually manage and keep our IT up and running for our safety and security needs. I'm not going to sit here and read all of these off, but they definitely help with cybersecurity monitoring, our communication systems, phones, intercom, getting automated messages and alerts out in our schools. Tony does a significant job helping us with our radio communication systems. Go Guardian Beacon, that is an important system that's constantly filtering information that's going on student Chromebooks. We get alerts when there's information that's going on that could potentially be a threat to a school. Could be a suicidal situation, or it could be someone researching weapons, things of that nature. So I can't express enough how much the IT teams and them being efficient at what they do, how that ties into the safety and security of our schools. When it comes to environmental security, again, I want to definitely recognize Kent Henson, our District Six Master's Locksmith, John Tate, and our City of Greeley and Evans Traffic Departments. When it comes to our environmental security, this definitely goes to our secure entry vestibules, our access control for our doors, key card management, the door hardware, fencing, all the things that you would want to, as far as the brick and mortar, that helps maintain a solid school perimeter and creates a safe learning environment for our students. Our schools also need to be set up in a way that we can lock down our schools quickly, but then we can also get our first responders in as fast as possible. Definitely want to make sure that we get recognition for John Tate and all the work he's done in the school district, especially with getting these secure entry vestibules and the camera systems that we now have at all District Six schools. We have top-notch compared to many school districts our size when it comes to the camera systems. Threat management, daily practices. Again, I want to recognize several people throughout the district, one being our district administrators who are continually monitoring the behavior in their school environment and continuing to contribute to that climate and culture of the schools. Our administrators do a great job of communicating with myself and our security team and making sure that we're keeping a safe environment for our students. When it comes to the threat management and threat assessments, our crisis team counselors have taken a very active role in that, led by Kristen Dalton, Deb Heck, and Kristen Arnold, who frequently attend threat assessment situations when we need to. When information has come about of a potential threat, we meet as a team and it's designed to make sure that we're being preventative and proactive to preventing threats from happening at our schools. Additional resources, again, with so many people being involved on our safety team is our outside partners of North Range Behavioral Health and Colorado School Safety Resource Center and the averting targeted violence from the U.S. Secret Service. So again, I've kind of already covered a lot of this information on here. As far as daily practices, it also goes to our visitor management system. What are we doing? Are we checking visitors in as they come in the door? Are we screening volunteers that were wanting to volunteer at our schools? All of that goes through our Raptor system and our Raptor screening process and making sure we're doing everything that we can to make sure that we know who is coming in and out of our school buildings to keep our students safe. Couple of more things I do want to speak to is definitely the multi-tiered systems of support that is built, integrated, and continually trained to our administrative teams of focusing, making sure that our students have a trusted adult in the building and that we know who their trusted adults are. Safe-to-tell systems, just that constant daily management. This is what's going on in our schools all day, every day. And I can't express enough how important the third column is, is to prevention, protection, and recovery in our schools. This also ties into Title IX investigations as well. Fourth column here is we have emergency crisis management. Again, that's the standard response protocol that you see in all of our schools, focusing on making sure we get this information out quickly, we're communicating in our schools. And then we're also doing a good job of communicating with our parents. I can't express enough of how important it is when we have these situations that we communicate with our parents immediately. One of my, Teresa Myers is one of my best friends over there for these situations. I contact, she knows when I call her generally in the middle of the school day, I need to get a communication and we need to get it out quickly. It also goes to the Raptor Alert System. We have a system that we're working on increasing our communication between first responders, myself, and also with our building administrators, getting them information as quick as we possibly can. With, also it ties into that reunification planning, our school safe radios, ongoing with our health clerks and management of medical services training and just being prepared to handle any emergency event that may end up coming our way. And then last again is our, definitely I want to recognize our law enforcement stakeholders and partners between the Greeley-Evans, Weld County sheriffs, and the District Attorney's Office. I can't express enough, of course, I come from the background of being a school resource officer, but the importance of having that connection with our students and having quality, providing quality school resource officers in our schools. We've had a, Chief Gates has fostered a wonderful relationship with our law enforcement partners, which they are continually giving us and funding us with outstanding SRO officers that are able to be in the schools, interact with students, and then respond to emergency events when needed. One thing I want to hit on there is all our law enforcement officers are trained in Alert Active Shooter Training, which is Advanced Law Enforcement Rapid Response Training. That's one of the most nationally recognized law enforcement response to active shooter events and emergency events. They do this training in our school buildings throughout the summer. We do have certain times when Evans trains, Weld County trains, and the City of Greeley trains. I also want to make sure that I recognize we have the Greeley-Evans firefighters and the UC Health paramedics who are frequently responding to our schools and providing additional support. So last, this is my last slide, is I want to highlight how all of these things tie into our District Six Command Center that we will be building, starting here in May. It's going to touch every single one of these pillars that we are working on for safety and security in regards to information technology, environmental security, threat management, daily practices, emergency management, and communicating with first responders. So the grant that we received was a $509,000 grant to build the Incident Response Center and enhance district-wide security and crisis response. The grant was through the School Security Disbursement Grant, which was created by Colorado State Legislature funded. They funded 16 million this year. There was 120 grant applications, which they awarded 68 grants, and we were one of the recipients. I definitely want to make sure and give thanks where it is due. Brad Lukey there in the back-left corner, he ran with about 80 to 90% of this grant and did all the writing. Did a lot of creative writing. No, he did a really, did a really good job getting this grant approved. He worked again closely with Kent Henson, Tony Chek, and our District Six Finance and Grant Department. So without those folks, none of this would have happened. They've done a great job, and we're continuing to meet to make this continue to happen. Where it's going to be located is in the front part of the administration building. There's that empty space where the bank has vacated us. We will be clearing that out, probably here in the next month. And we'll start getting everything out of there and begin putting tech and some construction for Emergency Command Center and the Command Center with all the tech that's going into it. Primary functions of that will be monitoring school security cameras, assist with District Six communications during emergencies to get those communications out as quick as possible, assist with monitoring safe-to-tell, Go Guardian Beacon alerts, school emergencies, crisis planning, access control systems, key card management, and building technology. The list goes on. There's a huge need for this. This is a current school trend. A lot of school districts our size have already built and started integrating command centers into their daily practices for their schools. Here's just a couple of images of a couple of command centers. To the, on the left side, that is some photos that I've taken from the Command Center down in Boulder. So top-left is just some of their screens that they have displayed. They primarily put up all the front doors, entry vestibules, entryways into all their school buildings, which are under constant surveillance. And then when they have problem areas, they're And then when they have problem areas, they're constantly trying to watch them as well. Bottom left is their Command Center, what they call Emergency Operations Command Center. We will be looking to build a kind of a smaller version of that in that front section up front. Bottom right corner is from Adams 12, and that's kind of their Command Center and everything that ties into that. That top one is just a photo of a Command Center that I pulled to put in the presentation. So without further ado, I know that was a very, very quick rundown. That's about an hour presentation. I tried to cut it down. Amy was supposed to let me know when I went past 12 minutes. So any questions?
Well, thank you Director Corliss for being here for the presentation. It's very thorough. And I'll just have some questions on the Command Center because I'm having a tough time visualizing. How many people are in the Command Center at any one time? Does that number fluctuate depending on the incident? I mean, is that where you will office in the Command Center? Is that something where numbers of people are brought in for a specific incident?
So the focus on that would be definitely to start, we're not going to be able to go immediately and do kind of like a 24-hour staffing. That is what some districts have done to basically, for mitigation of trying to prevent incidents from occurring, but primarily would start with probably about one to two, just working out of the Command Center. That would be monitoring screens, monitoring activity, helping with communications, taking phone calls from schools. That would be kind of about where we would start. Now, an emergency event happens, that's where you would take your school district leaders. Dr. Pilch and her cabinet would meet in the Emergency Operations Center, and then they would be able to be fed information from the personnel working in the Command Center and get direct information as to helping to make decisions, the bigger decisions that they need to make behind the scenes as to what may be occurring out at a school. You're going to have your Director of Security, some of their leadership team that's going to respond to the incident, but sometimes when it ties into incident command systems and incident command structure, you want your leaders, and this is the same as what they do for law enforcement and fire as well, is you have your decision makers are not directly on scene, and they're working to communicate from a bigger lens.
Okay. Thank you for that. Ms. Mash.
I got to get a sneak peek of this at the DAC meeting, but I just thought maybe one of the pieces that I think we really enjoyed hearing about was the Raptor Alert System. I wondered if you wanted to just give a little more detail about how that works and how quickly that gets information out.
So given it, I wasn't able to pull it up in this presentation, but our Raptor Alert System is basically an app. You can actually look it up on raptortech.com. It's an app that it is fully integrated into our school district. I've done a lot of work on it myself. Assistant Director Lukey's been working on it. It helps tie into its reunification, but it primarily is to get information out to our first responders as fast as possible so they know when a school has been put into a secure perimeter or lockdown. I have the ability from my phone, when I pull up the app, and it's, Raptor is, communicates, does the exact same lockdown policies as standard response protocol. So that information is on my phone. I can pick what school that an incident is happening on, and I can send an alert, and the administrators at that school get notified, as well as our, we don't have it for all our law enforcement officers right now, primarily our school resource officers, school resource sergeants and day shift supervision are the ones that get those notifications, but they know, it's just everything that we can do to shorten that response time to get first responders there quickly.
Any other questions or comments from board members? I'm not seeing any, so, you know, thank you Director Corliss, Chief Security, Chief Gates. We appreciate everything that you do as a parent in this district. I never doubt the security of my children and the safety of my children, and I appreciate how quickly you guys do get information to parents when there is. Generally, it's not an incident inside of a school, but outside of a school and in the community that we need to, something's happened in the neighborhood and we need to lock down a school, and just how quickly we get that information and just to know that my kids are safe. And so we appreciate everything that you do.
There was one thing that I forgot to mention in the presentation, that we have been working a lot with the City of Greeley Traffic Division with the crosswalk over at Greeley Central High School. There is flashing lights that have been installed there as of over spring break, and they're also working, I believe it might be with some of the student council, but the Lauren Applehorns with Greeley Central High School, they're working on getting more signage to get kids to that crosswalk, so.
That's great news as well. Thank you again. Next on our agenda is our public participation. As a board, we welcome the comments of community members, and we dedicate a portion of each business meeting to provide an opportunity for the community to present brief comments. All speakers are limited to two minutes for comments. Our board members typically will not respond or engage in discussion, but we will ask our district staff to respond as appropriate. Written testimony or speaker handouts must be submitted to our Board Secretary, Ms. Amy Lemon, not to individual board members. The board is committed to providing a safe environment where all members of the school community are treated with dignity and respect, and we expect all speakers to exercise their speech rights responsibly. Speakers are responsible for their own speech, and speakers' remarks must be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. Anyone who disturbs or may be required to sit down or to leave the boardroom. We ask all speakers and those in attendance to conduct themselves in a dignified and non-disruptive manner. Cheering, snapping, clapping, and other distractions are not allowed during or upon completion of any public comment. With that, our first speaker tonight is Mr. Brian Sullivan. Welcome, Mr. Sullivan. Thank you for being here. You have two minutes.
Thank you. I'm here today to talk about the book, The God of Small Things. This, like many of the books, you decided to ignore, and it has pornographic and immoral descriptions within those pages. It has a character that is clearly a pedophile that preys on young children. The book describes in great detail when the orange-drink, lemon-drink man took the young boy behind the counter and had the boy manually stimulate the man to a point of ejaculation on the boy's hand. The book also had many other elements that described sex between brother and sister, and infidelity between spouses. I'd like to know why you, as a Board of Education, refuse to acknowledge the grotesque abuse of our students. When will you stand up and protect our kids from the filthy morality and the taking of our kids' innocence? May I suggest that this book be used in the prison system rather than the educational system? More specifically, this book should be reserved for child rapists and molesters, for the simple reason that those types of people would love this book because the narrative fits their lifestyle and agenda. In closing, I would like to call for the elimination of this book in District Six schools. I would also like to know if there is any, which board members voted to keep this book? And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Next tonight, we have Mr. David Meek.
Well, happy resurrection! Thank you, Jesus, he's alive! Sad part is, most of you don't know it. As we go into this week, you got to read Matthew 23 as we go towards the cross. That's when Jesus really came down on the Pharisees, the Sadducees, the Herodians, all unbelievers. And you know what he did? He called them snakes and hypocrites. Yes, he did. And that's what I began to realize, that's about 98% of our council people and board members and so forth and so on. Some of you already got your millstones and you still haven't repented and done anything about it. Mr. Sullivan, I don't know who you are, but I could tell you the reason why is because they're not born again. Even the chairman of the board, who claims to be a pastor, is not even born again. Otherwise, he would have done that a long time ago. He would never put 666 up on the logo. That would never have happened if he was born again. And so he got the blind lead the blind. I'm sorry, but that's what's happened to us. Madame Marie O'Hare took the Bible out of schools in '62 and the Bible, or prayer out the next year with her son. Now, her son is now a minister of the gospel in Washington, DC, William Murray. We have gone downhill. We don't even know if we're a boy or girl, how sad it is. And we got to pay for all this security, which is crazy. Why? Because you have produced terrible, evil people. You have produced them because you have not told them the truth. And so what the resurrection does is tells us, Jesus is the way, he is the truth, and he is the life. No man comes to the Father but by Jesus Christ. And the only way you're going to make heaven your home is to be born again. So Father, ask them how some way. Open their blinded eyes. They'll turn to you and accept you as our Lord and Savior and turn our school around and make it a premier school, not only in Colorado, but in our region. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Mr. Meek. That concludes our public participation. Next on our agenda tonight is our consent agenda, and we'll need a motion to proceed.
I move that the Board of Education in Greeley-Evans School District Six approves the items presented on the consent agenda and authorizes the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second.
Any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing that, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Azari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Pitsi?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on our agenda tonight is a book review, Education, Board of Education Review of Book Appeals. And so we will now hear the appeals for the superintendent's decision to uphold the book review committee's findings and recommendations for the book, The God of Small Things, by Arundhati Roy. We're here for a very specific purpose today, tonight, and that purpose only is to hear the appeals and whether the Board of Education should uphold the superintendent's decision of the book, The God of Small Things. For appellate purposes, this is not an opportunity to speak about whatever you like, which is normally the case during public comment. This is only to speak about whether the particular book belongs in District Six libraries, depending on whether the board finds the book is educationally suitable for students in light of board policy. To that extent, the conversation, to the extent the conversation veers off into something that's not about the book and about the appeal, I will stop you and cut off your microphone. Your voice is very important, and we want to make sure that we, that the record is clear so that you are heard and that the Board of Education is able to make an informed decision on the law and the policy of this board. To that extent, we will ask the public and appellateants for your cooperation, to speak, to be respectful and speak to the issue that is before the board. It is requested that when appellateants address the board that comments are not to be directed personally to board members. It's also important to keep in mind that some of the mature content contained in the book may be inappropriate for young audiences, particularly for kindergarteners and elementary-age students. The book in question is a high school book, and so not available to kindergarteners and elementary students. After our appellate speak, then we will have Mr. Wes Tuttle come up to speak on behalf of the Book Review Committee and to inform the Board of Education about the selection and the review process, and will be available, he will be available to answer questions of the board members and any that we might have. Wes Tuttle facilitated the Book Review Committee and is in the best position to thoroughly describe all aspects of its process. Similar to the appellate's, I'd encourage board directors to prepare any questions they may have in advance in order to gain further clarification from Mr. Tuttle regarding the selection and review process. Mr. Fall is also available to speak with the Board of Education to discuss board policy and to provide some legal guidance on the board's final decision. With that, I haven't read that, Ms. Castillo, invite you up. Ms. Castillo, you'll, not the traditional two minutes, but five minutes to give us more. We have your written complaint and your appeal, but if there's anything else that you would like to say about this book and your opinion on the book, and know also that we may have questions for you as well. So thank you for being here.
Thank you so much. I'm very disappointed that I'm the only one up here. We went from hundreds of complaints to one person willing, and I think that's because the word got out that your or your spouse's employer would be contacted for saying something that's not appreciated. I actually don't have much to add to the email that I sent specifically because I can't say those words in here. I'm sure that a lot of people wonder why I continue to fight, and to be truthful, it's because when I get to go meet my Abba Father, I hear, "Well done, good and faithful servant", and not, "Turn from me in your wicked works," because I do not know you. That's all I have.
Are there any questions board members might have for Ms. Castillo? Ms. Mash?
Ms. Castillo, did you read the book in its entirety?
Yes, I did.
And did you read the document created by the Book Review Committee?
Yes, I did.
So I was curious, in your appeal, you stated that they don't list any type of literary value, that there's actually no reason why the book committee is keeping this book. So I was curious because there's a three-page document in which there are 12 criteria which the book has evaluated for literary merit and educational appropriateness. So I was wondering which of those 12, you know, each one is a paragraph where the Book Review Committee stated why they feel that that book is appropriate based on those 12 criteria. Is there one of those or multiple of those specifically that you take issue with?
I think I just mostly take issue with the content of the book, the discussion of the sexual acts and stuff. I feel like this is more of a college-level book, something that more mature children should be reading instead of. And so although those literary values may be deemed appropriate, I think that it's more geared towards college-age students.
Okay. Also, I guess...
Because, I mean, even as an adult, I mean, there's a lot of things that I don't feel like it painted any of, you know, some of the concepts in a good light, in terms of like what the ways of the culture, the country. You know, they talk a lot about the white people, the Europeans and their problems. I don't feel like that is really shining through the way it probably should because of some of the detrimental portions of the sexual acts in there. These children's brains are not developed enough to handle this yet. This causes massive stunting in their intellectual growth. I don't understand, I guess I'm just so disgusted by the sexual nature of the book that I just don't feel like it's geared towards even high school students, unfortunately.
So the sex act that takes place is absolutely portrayed as abuse, and there's nothing positive about that interaction. And in fact, the entire book is about how the family dissolves based on that act, how that character's life was ruined. So the Book Review Committee talks about that that could help children to openly discuss trauma's impact. You know, we know that one in four women will be sexually assaulted in their lifetime, and we have 22,000 students. So this is the experience of some of our students, and I find that refusing to talk about it is only perpetuates...
Well, I think what you're missing, though, is the fact that the parent is not signing off on it prior to. So if the parent's not aware that their child is reading this and that this may be something that they need to be prepared to have a conversation with them about, that's my biggest grief here, is that we're not notifying the parents before talking, allowing them to check these books out. That is where I think we can have the librarian. It's just as easy for me to reach out to the librarian to say, and the principal, right? Because that's the proper role, is you have to email the principal and the librarian and say, "Please restrict access to this book for my child." But it's just as important for the librarian to be able to reach out to the parents and say, "Hey, your child is interested in reading this book. I want to let you know it has these hard conversations in it," and prepare the parents so that they can come around their child and support them as they read it. I couldn't imagine, you know, I actually, this isn't completely off-topic, but I heard a woman talk when she was hearing about some of the stuff with the book complaints, and she was sexually assaulted, and she states that she has no idea what she would have done if this book would have fallen into her hands without her knowing what was in it beforehand and without somebody to be there to help her guide through it because of the trauma that sexual assault had caused on her. I'm not saying that our teachers are not equipped to handle this, but is it fair to I'm not saying that our teachers are not equipped to handle this, but is it fair to put that full burden on them to be the only ones to know that students are reading these books? Why are we not including the parents before we have them? If you look at my original complaint, I asked for parental notification or parental consent to check the book out, not to pull the book out of the library.
I have a question, Ms. Castile, based on what you, what you just said. How, how would we, just as a matter of practicality, right, if we were going to notify parents about books ahead of time, which, which books would we notify them about?
Well, I mean, I think we have, so this is one of my concerns too, right, is Mr. Tuttle has said that, right, we can opt our children out of books, but there's no way to notify parents who are coming in. It's not a very easy process to find what books are in the school. A lot of parents want to believe that books of this magnitude aren't in the school, The Bluest Eye as well. But I think that if we can have an idea of saying, "Hey, this book has now had a complaint made about it, so this goes on the list. So if a student wants to check this book out, like we asked for, for the parental consent prior to checking it out," you know, once a complaint has been filed about a specific book, then for that book in the district, anytime a student is wanting to check it out, then parents would be notified beforehand. And, and like I was saying, you know, with the librarian reaching out, giving a phone call, I've gotten a phone call that my daughter wanted to take ibuprofen at school. I feel like this would be kind of of the same magnitude.
So any book that would receive a complaint, then we would put on a list, and, and then on that, a parent would have to, to sign off ahead of time, tell their, say that their child could read those books. Do you, do you think that that might produce a lot more book complaints? When you see how that might cause a lot of people to, to say, "Well, you know, I don't, I don't want my child reading the Bible, so I'm going to, I'm going to complain about the Bible," and then that goes on, on a list, right? I mean, I, I just could foresee the number of books on that list being, being rather large.
Well, I mean, we originally complained about 11 books, to my knowledge. I personally have not submitted any other complaints. I, you know, know that there were some other books, especially after it was discussed, The Bluest Eye was removed, but now it's back in at Greeley Central. You know, maybe put a complaint in on that one, but I, you know, am not, I guess in protecting the children, if somebody feels like their child should not read the Bible and therefore wants to make a complaint, that parents have to consent, then-
I'm just saying, it could be, it could be a large number, right?
I agree. I mean, and how, how do we go about it in terms of protecting children too, though? You know, like Ms. Mash said, one in four women will be sexually assaulted. How do we protect the kids who are being sexually assaulted right now from stumbling upon this?
But I would submit that those might be the children or the students who would benefit from, from reading someone else's experience from, or, or their friend, who knows their, that their friend is going through that, to, to develop some, some empathy, to understand what that person might be going through. But I guess I would also push back on, we want, we want parent involvement, and we want each parent to make the appropriate decision for their child. But if we are requiring a, it's the reverse, right? So now we are requiring the parent, I will discuss with my child what my child should read and what, and I will protect my child from whatever books I think. And I think that we need to trust our parents to do what's best for their child rather than, than beginning restrictions.
So you're saying basically a phone call to the parent saying, "Hey, this is a heavy topic. I wanted to give you a heads up. You know, are you good with little Sally checking this out?" And the parent saying, "Yes, I'm completely fine." That's too much?
Well, that's an added burden to our librarian when, if a parent has concerns that there might be books they don't want their child to read, they have, they have recourse for that. And, you know, additionally, our students have the right, and the books belong to them, and they have a right to information and to ideas. So even putting in that parental permission slip is, is a level of restricting the student's access to that book, and we know that that is-
I have a question. If a child does check one of these books out and loses it, is the parent going to be financially responsible for that book, to pay the school back for that if it was destroyed, lost, damaged?
I think as with all of our books and our resources.
Yeah.
I don't-
I just, I kind of feel like if you, if the parent's going to have to pay for it because it got lost or damaged, doesn't that take away the child's right to privacy from their parent for being able to read that book?
I didn't say that they have a right to privacy, I said they have a right to the information. And so if we're requiring their parent to sign off before they can read the book, that's a restriction.
Thank you, Ms. Mash. Mr. Bentley has a question.
I guess, I guess I just want to clarify that you think it'd be better for, for a librarian who has, say, a thousand books to, to monitor a thousand books times 200 to a thousand kids and make those phone calls to parents who may or may not answer? You think that's better than the parents who have an issue with 11 books calling and just giving those 11 books a list to this librarian? Because we already have that policy in place. You can protect your kid-
If you know about it ahead of time, but there's-
The librarian, there's no way that they've read all 1,000 books in their library, in my opinion.
Well, I, I think that also poses another problem, that the oversight of bringing books in, there really isn't one.
There is, there is.
At least as of November 2022-
That's not true. We have a policy, and it's, it's loud and clear, and we've discussed it a hundred times.
If you would let me finish, as of November 2022, when I talked to Dr. Pilch about it, she had said there was no oversight, so I apologize.
We've had, we've had a policy for a long time on how the books come in, but-
Oh, go ahead.
There's also a lot of laws protecting the books once they are in. We've, we've been through this, I don't know, five times now, but the, the, you, you don't like the policy of, if you don't like a book, call and restrict your kids? Is that, because we have a-
I guess I just-
What I think is a good policy, I'm just trying to, I mean-
I guess, so like I said, you know, just having parents be aware, how, how to look in the libraries. That's, you know, not something that's readily put forward by the district of how to research what books are in your school's libraries. And if, so when a parent calls or emails the librarian and the principal to restrict access, what is the next step that the, that the librarian does? Do they like type that in a note in the students? Do you see what, like, I genuinely don't know what happens after I email.
I believe there's a digital catalog, and it's, it's highlighted on their thing, but I'm not exactly sure how the system works. The same way that you guys found the books, it's accessible to the entire public.
So then-
Because you guys went through and found which books are in which schools-
So then under that book, my daughter's name would show up saying-
No, it'd be under your daughter's account, which is private, and then if, when she read her thing, it would be, "Hey, she can't check this book out."
Okay, so there is an extra step, though, after sending the email that the librarian has to do?
To my knowledge, I'm pretty sure we've, we've discussed it a couple of times.
Yeah. Unless there are any other questions for Ms. Castile, I think probably Mr. Tuttle can shed some light on some of the questions that, that you've asked, Ms. Castile. Are there any questions, further questions for Ms. Castile? Again, thank you for being here-
Thank you.
-tonight. We'll bring up Mr. Tuttle. Mr. Tuttle, again, is giving us the, I guess, the summary of what the book committee has, has decided? And I don't know how many of those, those questions you were able to answer for us, Mr. Tuttle, to speak authoritatively in terms of process and how that, how that works. But if you can answer any of those, we would greatly appreciate it.
I can, definitely can. I appreciate this, and Stacy, I have to just recognize you and say thank you. I do appreciate your concerns. The committee, it's a complex topic, and I really do feel like we have a really good, solid process in place, and we've been following that. I'm going to take a few minutes and just kind of highlight those, that process for you again. I know Mr. Ozari is new on the board, and so this is the first time he's had the opportunity to go through this, but it's been a while. Last time we had an appeal at the board was in June, so I'm going to go back through real quickly and just highlight the process in general. The book is The God of Small Things that we've alluded to. Mrs. Castile alluded to the fact that there was 165 complaints. This was part of the filings that came in in December, and certified letters were sent out to all of those recipients, saying that we were in the process and how those would be handled. Many of them were duplicated copies of each other. Some people would submit three copies if there was, if the book was at three different locations. This particular book, you'll see here in a little bit, is just at Central High School, so this one had just single copies submitted. Communication-wise, that initial communication, like I said, certified letters went out January 4th, 2023, made sure that all the people that had filed complaint forms were in the loop on what we were doing, how we were handling things like that. Then before the committee started convening our meetings, we met, October 31st, we opened it up on the website for people to be able to sign up, to come and speak to the board, to our committee, or to submit additional written communication. And we did not have anybody sign up to either come speak to the committee or submit an additional written communication. My apologies, the screen is off. Can you guys see this at all on yours? Okay. So I'll just know that it's here, you can reference back to it. February 14th, then, both the committees and the superintendent's decision were posted on the website. We sent out letters to everybody who had submitted original complaint forms on that date as well, and then they were given the opportunity to appeal that. And then on March 18th, letters were sent to anybody who did appeal it, and as you heard tonight, Stacy was the one that did appeal this one. The committee, in order to participate on the committee, we require that people be objective, not have preconceived determinations. In other words, we didn't invite anybody at the end of the continuum who had submitted a complaint form, because they kind of had their thoughts and stuff already made. Likewise, we did not invite anybody from High Plains Library or the UNC Library, because they have a very strong First Amendment thing about, "I'm not ever banning any books." We ask people to be in the middle and to be able to consider all options for our students and for the books that were even considered. The committee that was comprised here, we had 19 members. We purposely targeted community members that would have some experience. So we got a pastor from a large church in town. We have people from North Range that deal with students that are dealing with trauma, youth that are, have traumatic situations, and we wanted them on this committee. Six parents. We went to DAC, and so those parents are from across the system. We've got great representation there. Two recent graduates, recent graduates, meaning they graduated in the last four years, that are now in college, and they were able to be a part of this. We had four teachers, one language arts teacher from each of the high schools, as well as then our certified librarian that's also at one of the high schools. We had four district administrators, two district-level ones, as well as two building ones, and then two facilitators. So the, the committee really is a broad representation, and they were asked to read the book in its entirety, participate in person in the committee, and then participate in consensus decision. It was not about a majority vote and we move on. We would talk about it. We would look at the rationale. We would look at the concerns, and we would continue this conversation until everybody felt comfortable and supportive of the recommendation that we make. The dates that we met, we started in November with this particular book. November 14th, we did an orientation for new members on some of the legal boundaries that we have to live within. What are the board policies that we have to abide by? What's the Colorado and state guidelines and so forth? Then we looked, and we also distributed all the documents at that November 14th meeting. So that's when everybody got all of the complaint forms that had been submitted, that 165 complainants. Then we met November 28th. We had scheduled for December 5th, but we didn't end up needing that meeting date. Context, as I alluded, is Greeley Central High School. We, on our first meeting, we review the criteria. We look at those criteria, the 12 that you alluded to, Covenly, I believe it was, or maybe it was Natalie Mash. We, we look at those 12 criteria. Those are our guiding decision-making things. It's not about our gut feelings about the book, it's compared to those 12 criteria. We also provided everything to the committee. Those 12 criteria, by the way, they were updated in relation to communication with Colorado Department of Education, some other schools that were also doing this work, as well as the American Library Association that oversees both public school libraries as well as our school public libraries in our school systems. And so in consultation with all of those organizations, we did some refinement of these 12, and these 12 now have been part of our board policy for several years now. They are part of the policy for adopting and purchasing books, as well as then if there's a challenge, we use the same 12 criteria. Then the second meeting, we met and we utilized that consensus, like I said, and we came up with this recommendation. So our recommendation is that the committee recommends The God of Small Things continue to remain openly available in high school libraries without any restriction. And you can read the other paragraph. There are, as Natalie Mash mentioned, there's 12 statements, each aligned to those criteria. I'm not expecting you to be able to read it on the screen, but those are just the paragraphs that we went through each criteria to say, "We need to look at each aspect in relation to The God of Small Things." The report concluded with two additional paragraphs, and I just want to highlight a couple of things. "The God of Small Things challenges readers' worldviews on issues such as generational poverty and trauma through its extraordinary narration and nuanced exploration of complex social issues. The God of Small Things is well-written, poetic, provocative, emotive, and deeply insightful. Further, it depicts the life experiences of individuals living in various castes in India and the intergenerational trauma they have and continue to endure, which empowers readers to become more empathetic with their peers and broadens their perspectives." The other paragraph, then, again, it does have complex things. "The committee finds that the novel is educationally suitable for high school students and not pervasively vulgar. The God of Small Things provides an age-appropriate outlet for students to better understand how to deal with these difficult subjects and how to understand each other." That was submitted to Dr. Pilch, our superintendent. She then wrote her own response to that, and her decision is that the committee's recommendation stands, and as Stacy Castile alluded to, then, reminded parents that they always have that right to request the limitation for their own child, whether that be access to the entire library or whether there be access to particular books. That always is an available option for parents. And you're right that then, if a patron comes in to check out a book, we can flag it so when that patron goes to check out the book, and they try to check out a book that the parent has restricted, it comes up for that particular student. Nobody else knows about it, but that particular student that would be trying to check out a book if the parent has restricted it, it would come up with that flag when the, when the teacher was trying to check that book out, and they would know not to check that book out to that, to that child. That is the work of the committee. Any questions?
I think we may have some. I know Mr. Bentley has one.
I just was wondering the, the frequency of this book being checked out, and we heard that last time, and I didn't see that in this report.
The, this book has only been checked out twice since it's been purchased. So it was purchased in 2018, and it was checked out once in 2021, and then again in 2023.
Any other questions? Mr. Bentley, again.
The last time we had an update, only one, one parent had called in to restrict books. Is there any updates on that status?
Nothing that I'm aware of, no changes from that time.
That same- So even with all, I mean, it has been fairly well-publicized, right?
It has.
What we're, what we're doing with these books, no one has, has called to restrict-
There have been a couple of, a couple of them, but I have not checked recently on the status of that. But to my knowledge, only two parents have called in and restricted their child's ability to check out books.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from board members? I'm not seeing any, Mr. Tuttle, so again, thank you for your work. Please, I say this all the time, but the large majority of the work that's done in this district's done by committees and people who, who volunteer, and it's a lot of time that, that people have given to reviewing this book, to reading it, to meeting it, to discussing it, to producing a document. And so thank you for your work, and please, on, on our behalf, thank them.
Thank you.
Well, now let board members speak to this, and I, I think we've done this in the past, but just let, let each board member have a chance to speak. And Mr. Azari, this is your first time going through this. So I think we'll, we'll start down here this time, and start with you, Ms. Sullivan. And then we'll just move this way and finish with Ms. Mash and myself. But if you have any comments, we'd love to hear those now.
I do, thank you. So when I started reading this book, it was a challenging read, and it's way above a lot of the reading levels of most of our students. As we know, our reading level isn't as high as we'd like it to be, but this one is definitely more of a college-level reading. And, I mean, I found it, I was struggling to take hold of what was being said because I couldn't pronounce the names. I couldn't pronounce the, the cities and the locations. And when you can't do that, that kind of disengages you from the book. So I actually had to take notes and write down how people were assimilated, the relationships and whatnot between each person, until I finally got into the groove of the book. But I probably was about eighty pages in, and at that point, I didn't know why this book was being challenged. And then I hit, I think, page eighty-five, and then I realized why it was being challenged. Then I, I started getting a little frustrated. But this book, I feel that it does encourage infidelity in the marriage. And coming from families, that's not what, the encouragement we want from our, for our children. We already struggle with the divorce rates, and we already just struggle, we already struggle with the infidelities within marriages and the broken marriages that happen. So that is damaging to a child. We also had, in the book, there was a seven-year-old that was sexually assaulted by an older man, white out, you know, in the open, in a movie theater. That's abusive, and that was very disturbing to me when I got to that. Spousal abuse, there was also promotion of spousal abuse, and it was accepted for the men to beat the women within their marriages and whatnot. It promoted incest between siblings. This book I found to be, it was also very depressing. And when we talk about the safety and the well-being of our children within our district, we're always pushing and talking about how we need to support them. We need to make sure that they're feeling safe, that they're feeling protected. And I don't think that book does that, because this book, to me, was a highly depressing, I'm sorry, highly depressing to read with the issues and the, some of the issues, I mean, you might say that, Natalie, and I know you did say that it's, does not promote the sexual assault, but a, a student that reads that book is not going to interpret that in that fashion, not necessarily. This reading comprehension is way above this level. It did nothing of the sorts to bring encouragement of power and enthusiasm in life. It was, it was depressing through the entire book. Look at the amount of the adults now that are reaching out for themselves, that are looking for self-help, that are in many forms of counseling, and the pursuit of the internal happiness. We're struggling. Why are we not promoting that within the schools so that when they become adults, they have that solid ground? This book is the opposite of everything we talk about for protecting our kids. We also have permission slips that we hand out in the classroom when we're going to use a book for, that we feel is not appropriate for instruction, and the parents have to sign those books off. But we're also learning from our own children at home that the permission slips are very vague, and they don't always go into the great detail as to what's within the book. So to me, I'm going to be a no on this book. It was, it goes against all the values of what I believe our schools should be focused on, which is protecting and bringing safety and morals and values to each of these children so they have the opportunity for success, not the dreariness of what this book entailed.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Dr. Campus Pitsi.
Yeah, so I've got to say, this is one of the best reads of my life, really. The God of Small Things, beautifully written, almost to the level of Beloved, kind of poetic, I think is how the book committee described it, has a certain cadence to it as you read it, has been translated in forty languages. I'm not surprised by that at all. I am a proud yes, and I question why it's not at the Greeley West and the Northridge High School Libraries. I, I don't think it promotes domestic violence. If anything, there's a really great scene in the book where a child who had watched his mother be beaten throughout his life by his wealthy father, who, you know, was an important figure in, in their community and well-respected, but nobody knew that behind closed doors, he, he would beat his wife to the point, you know, a, a lot, a lot of abuse. When that child came back from Oxford University, one of the first things he did is tell his father that he would, he should never, ever see him beat his mother again, and his father never did after that scene. He also never spoke to his wife again, which is awful. But it highlights the caste system. To me, one of the most grotesque scenes was not the ones that have been mentioned, but one where a mother thinks of a black hand on her daughter and almost vomits thinking about, about this person that she thinks lower than herself because of the, the caste system. There is a class of, of people called untouchables in the, in the Indian caste system. And, and the mother, because of the color of this person's skin and their, and their lower class, almost vomits just with the thought of a, a black hand touching her, her daughter. And it's not because, you know, it, it, it had all to do with class and, and race and colorism. And, and to me, that, those are the disturbing scenes in the book that highlight the human, human nature. You know, so many of the books that we've reviewed, The Kite Runner highlights the caste system in, in Middle Eastern culture, and Beloved, you know, took, took place in times of slavery. There's, there's so much to, to learn from them, to, to improve from them. Like Natalie already mentioned, the scene in the theater, absolutely horrible, but that is a, a scene in the book that is meant not to arouse, but to disturb, and to, and it really is what, as Natalie mentioned, dissolves that whole family. So yeah, I, I don't think it promoted infidelity. I don't think it promoted incest. I don't think it promoted pedophilia. Does it mention those topics as well as racism and colorism? Yes, but not in a way of glorifying these things. Is it depressing to read about sexual abuse and racism? Absolutely. Should we be protecting our children from difficult conversations from the real world? Absolutely not. I would be thrilled if my kids read this book in high school, and again, just proudly voting yes to keep, to uphold the superintendent's decision and the book review committee's decision on this book.
Mr. Bentley.
Yeah, this just kind of comes down to, to our processes and procedures, I think. From, from the legality standpoint, we sat through multiple meetings with our lawyers, and the, the laws and the case studies are relatively clear. The First Amendment is pretty strong, and it, and it's pretty broad. We've seen or heard nothing from anybody, you know, from the committee to, to our lawyers that, that would warrant this, you know, falling under the classifications of a book that we could remove. Did I like the book? Not, not particularly. Do I think it's a hard book? Yes. Do I believe that potential kids probably are better readers than me? Also, yes. I don't, I, I can see the value in a, in a, in a hard, difficult book. And it, it's not really about that to me. It's more, we have a good process in place. We, we have refined it as, as this issue was brought up. But I am confident, going through CASB, the legislative session, you know, we, we walked around and, and people grabbed us and, and said that our model's being used across the state because nobody can figure out a better model to review these books. And I'm confident in what we're doing as a, a district to ensure that there's a way that the parents have a say in their child's learning, and at the same time is protecting them. We keep hearing over and over that it's one or two times in, in the years that these books are, are, are being checked out. That, that is sad and alarming, but it's also the way society's moving. We're, we're going digital and, and books getting checked out from libraries is, is kind of dying off. So to, to me, this just comes down to a procedural and, and a litigation standpoint. And, and I'm, I'm confident in what we're doing as a district.
There we go. Well, this is my first book review, and I took this very, very seriously. And I examined all the materials, all the written materials, and I would presume that when folks turn in things in writing, that they've put a lot of thought behind that documentation because it's now part of that legal record, and it's out there, and it's, it's documented. So I, I went through all of this stuff and read it very carefully. And since I have the dubious honor, I read a lot of those, since I have the dubious honor of always being able, of always being the first to cast my vote, I feel it important to explain publicly the foundation underlying that vote. I would like to make it clear that I try through this process to eliminate any personal bias I might have toward the literature in question. That's not my position. My position is to be a board member. My position is to, to take a look at the written material, to listen to the appellant, who is very eloquent in, in what she had presented to us, and I understand where she is coming from, you know, in a lot of ways, okay? But in appealing the superintendent's decision to uphold the recommendation of the committee, the appellant writes on the document that there is no actual reason why the book committee is keeping this book. But in analyzing the committee's review carefully, I noted five primary reasons that the committee cited in their recommendation to keep The God of Small Things on the shelf of the Greeley Central Library, which is the only library that contains the book at this time. I'm going to read those five that I, that I focused on. "The committee cites the impactful things explored in God of Small Things, such as childhood trauma, interpersonal relationships, the indoctrination into the white Catholic being, illustrates a few of the traumatic experiences the characters went through. By discussing these complex topics, the book provides an opportunity to better help students contextualize such issues, both in their personal lives and as applied to society as a whole." Number two, "The book illustrates perspectives often overlooked, depicting assault not only as a violent attack, but as a means to threaten silence and exert control. This reflects many real survivors' experiences. Though traumatic, these candid depictions may help students process their own suffering or the suffering of loved ones." Three, "For high school students seeking to understand global injustice, this novel invites empathy and education to reveal why social advocacy remains essential." Four, "The author uses strong visual and poetic language to help readers imagine a place they've likely never been. This goes to the high standards of writing, and it also teaches our students about a different writing style and different type of narration. If the school district's goal is to make future writers, students will learn so much from reading The God of Small Things and what a great writer can achieve." And she's risked her life to write this book in her country. Number five, "It is important students have the right to read this if they so choose." It is important that students have the right to read this if they so choose. Now, as a high school teacher from the past, it is a college-level reading book, but we have college-level scholars in our schools. We have students that take college-level classes, quite a few of them. Now, if a parent is, does not want their child reading that book, one of the benefits of having this procedure that we have in place is that people publicly now know about this book. So it is a benefit to what we do here in this school district. I'll wrap this up. Furthermore, on the public complaint form, public concerns complaints about instructional materials, when answering question number seven, "What do you believe is the theme or purpose of this material?", the appellant writes, "Not sure." But the committee does have an answer to that question. And by the way, I'm not slamming the appellant. I had to read this book, I had to listen to it, I had to examine it, I had to study it. It's like an AP Literature book. It's way up there. And, and what they write about in this book is not always what it is. "The river means something. Papachy discovering a moth that he wanted named after himself, and then the university says it's not a new species, he retires, and then the person that replaces him says it is a new species, and they name the moth after that new guy, and Papachy goes crazy and abuses members of his family." That's a deep thing, but what does that moth stand for? It keeps recurring through the book. The kids keep seeing this moth, this moth, all the time through the book. It's deep. It requires thought and evaluation and education. But the committee does have an answer to that question in their review. The committee makes it clear in their assessment that The God of Small Things invites students to control depths of tragedy shaped by unfair power structures and intergenerational trauma. "The God of Small Things challenges readers' worldviews on issues such as generational poverty and trauma through its extraordinary narration and nuanced exploration of complex social issues. These perspectives of the committee have not been disputed in the documents submitted by the appellant, nor in this appeal today. Rather, the appellant's complaint is centered on specific passages with graphic content, which the committee defends by writing, quote, 'Despite its inclusion of content or language that may be considered offensive, the relative literary value of the material as a whole outweighs its potential to offend.'" "In studying this book in great detail, to determine the accuracy of the committee's examination, I found it to be an accurate evaluation. As a board member, I see no compelling reason or substantiation why the superintendent's decision in accordance with policy KEC dash R should be overturned." That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Azari. Ms. Mash.
Thank you, Mr. Azari, for that very complete report, and, and I have nothing much to add to that, other than I trust that this process is, is robust and is an excellent process for examining the literary merits of challenged materials. I trust our parents to do what is best for their individual student, and I trust our students to, to manage themselves, to, to self-censor if they begin reading a book that they decide is inappropriate or triggering for them, that they'll make that decision not to read it. And so I will also be voting to keep this book in our schools.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that, that some of you really enjoyed the book and that some of you did not enjoy the book. It's not, I, I think my opinion is closest to Mr. Bentley's. It's just a very straightforward decision that we're, we're looking at each, each time because our, our students do have a First Amendment right to receive information, and we can restrict that if we find that a, a material, a book, is educationally unsuitable or pervasively vulgar. And you heard Mr. Tuttle use those words. And while there, there are some vulgar words and some vulgar sentences, and like Ms. Sullivan said, you, you don't find any of those until about eight, page eighty-five, and then there's a word, and then you read about another ten pages and you find a few sentences. And then you have to read all the way to the end of the book, page three hundred and twenty, or somewhere around there, and you, and you find a handful of other sentences. And there's just, even though there's, there are, there is some vulgarity, it is just no way that you can define it as pervasive, existing throughout the work. And so there's no compelling reason, as, as Mr. Azari said, to overturn superintendent's decision or the book committee's decision, in my opinion. So unless there's any further comment? And I'm not seeing any. Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Oh, we didn't make a motion.
Oh, we need to make a motion. Thank you, Ms. Mash.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evan School District Six upholds the superintendent's decision regarding the recommendation of the review committee for The God of Small Things by Aaron Dottie Roy, based on the rationale included in the review committee's findings and recommendation. Second.
Thank you both. Is any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Ms. Lemon.
Director Azari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsy?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Nay.
Motion carries five, one.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on our agenda is our employee benefits renewal. And this is an action item that will need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves the insurance renewal as presented and authorizes the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second.
Thank you both. Before we open this up to board member comments, questions, I imagine Ms. Sponsler, you have some presentation for us.
Thank you. We'll hope that our PowerPoint continues to show up on the screen. If not, I will just keep going. Tonight, it is time for you all to approve the renewal of our employee benefits program for all of our employees. Just a reminder of what our employee benefits entail. We have medical insurance. We have new last year or this current year is NICE healthcare, the dental insurance, vision insurance, life insurance. Then we have some voluntary options for employees to choose from and we have a pretty robust wellness program. So the medical insurance, this is something that we talked about in our negotiations time with our teachers and administration and board members present. So this is nothing new to you, but just an official recommendation that we renew with Aetna. We would move from a fully insured plan to a self-insured plan and we had moved from four plans to three plans. And this should actually be a little bit easier for our employees because you really have two choices, two questions that you have to answer. The first one being, do you need coverage out of network? And the second one being, do you want a high deductible plan with an HSA or do you want a copay plan? So that should really simplify things for our employees to make a decision for themselves. And with the change to the three plans, one thing that we have heard from our employees over and over is they want options and so this will give them options. All of our plans would offer coverage at Banner and UC Health. So those are our two local providers and all would be covered. And then we will continue to pay a portion of the dependent premium costs when employees choose to add a spouse, children or family onto their plan. And here's some good news. From my perspective, the cost to District Six will be comparable to what we are currently paying. That means that we don't plan to see an increase. In fact, it'll be a decrease in the premiums that we pay. The cost to employees will also be lower. And so I think that's pretty unheard of at this point in time, but employees can see a lower premium when they add dependents onto their plan. This is all contingent upon all of you agreeing to transfer some money, we'll call it kind of the seed money for this plan, into a new bank account. This would come from your fund balance to seed money this change to self-insured insurance coverage. That will officially happen when we bring you the proposed budget for your consideration. NICE healthcare, we keep getting just amazing reviews and response from people. They really appreciate having that as an option. It's easy to use, pretty immediate appointments, sometimes same day, sometimes the next day. But that's been a big plus for our employees. That does come with a cost and so there is a $5 a month per employee cost increase, but our savings from our insurance plan will help offset this increase. Dental insurance, again, we recommend that we renew with Aetna. No change in the rates and no change in the plan. Same with vision insurance. We would recommend that you renew with IMED. No change in the rates and no change to the plan benefits. And life and AND insurance, we recommend renewing with the Hartford. Again, no change in rates and no change in the plan benefits. The voluntary benefits, we will keep the same options available to employees. Those include accidental life and AD&amp;D coverage, accident policy or hospital indemnity policy. And then finally, we have our wellness programs. In partnership with Aetna, they continue to be huge supporters of our wellness program. We have amazing team of wellness staff and volunteers from across the district who participate in our wellness programs to offer amazing opportunities for our staff. And they continue to be very popular and we continue to look for new and innovative ways to bring wellness opportunities to our staff. And in addition to the wellness programs through Aetna, we also have our employee assistance program that we continue to offer to employees so that they can access mental health care or other support services as they need them. So with that said, I'll turn it over to you if you have any questions.
We may have a few for you. Mr. Bentley.
Yeah, mine's more of just general comments. We talked about this in negotiations last year and you finalized a very well-structured deal this year. More along the lines of the employees and the exciting opportunities that this provides the district as a benefit. You know, you covered your bases with the three different plans, you know, people don't realize like outside of yourself, you know, different stages of life, different just life circumstances, people need different kinds of insurance. It's not a one plan fits all. So I just commend you for, you know, to me, it seems like you've got all the bases covered. The high deductible plan with the HSA is exciting because you can put 4150 a year at the 24 levels away, tax-free. And so basically, I can't remember exactly what the deductible was. I think it's 6750. Is that what?
I can't recall.
I think that's the maximum that you can be or something. Basically, in a year and a half, you can have tax-free, your deductible and then you pay your deductible out of your HSA and you get 100% of your spending power of your dollar instead of taxed rate, right? So if your tax rate's 30%, you actually got to spend 100% of your dollar because it comes out of your paycheck pre-tax. On the flip side of this, on the district side, with that seed money, basically you guys can run this like an endowment fund and after years of pulling those profits back from the insurance companies, this account could be generating enough revenue to fund this account going forward. And it's just, it's very exciting on a financial and opportunity level and it'll give the district more ability to do more going forward if it's managed correctly. And it's kind of, you couldn't really ask for a better option, in my opinion, to manage it yourself outside of paying giant insurance companies more profits who are already posting record profits. So congratulations and I'm so ecstatic about this, this part of the benefits package that I just can't put it into words. So thank you so much and just to the, to the district and the residents, just like, this is a big deal and I hope that you guys realize the job she's done to get us to a position where we can do this because this isn't, this isn't easy and it's actually very hard and it's very risky for a little bit until that funds build up and stuff. So it's her and the district and being more responsible with the tax dollars and I can't express my gratitude for that.
I would echo what Mr. Bentley said. I really appreciate how you've used one-time money, money that we, we want, money that's in a savings, so to speak, in our fund balance to generate ongoing savings for us. We do appreciate the work and the creativity, Ms. Sponsler, very much. Are there any other questions or comments from board members? Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Azari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsy?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries six, zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Well, that is all that we have tonight. We will say, get well, Dr. Pilch, get well, Mr. Norwood, and this meeting is adjourned.